Good morning. I am calling to order our regularly scheduled meeting of the Committee of the Whole. My name is Elizabeth Glidden. I'm the Chair of this committee, and I'm joined today by Councilmembers Gordon, Conno, Bender, Quincy, Worsami, Goodman, Frye, and Palmasano. And we are a quorum of this committee. We have one item for discussion today, and it is an update on the 2003 American Indian Memorandum of Understanding, and also a discussion of what will be a process for reviewing and updating that memorandum with the community. And this is also, I think, a very good opportunity for this council, which has not, in a formal setting, had an update on this very significant body of work that has taken place to establish our existing American Indian Memorandum of Understanding. So I think this is an important opportunity for us, the council, to hear from the community and from our staff. And Director of the Neighborhood Community Relations Department, David Rubador, is going to introduce this topic and then lead us through several speakers who will present to us today. Thank you.
Chair Glidden, thank you for the introduction, and good morning, Councilmembers. My name is David Rubador. I'm the Director of the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department with the city. And I'm going to do just a brief introduction to the topic before you today. It's really a receive-and-file item or action item for you today. And the idea is what we'd like to do, as Chair Glidden has expressed, is to update you on a significant undertaking that we're taking with the American Indian community to really look at the original MOU memorandum of understanding that we have with the American Indian community, refresh that and revive that to really position us for the future and, in essence, the upcoming work that we will continue to have with the community. I'm going to be fairly brief. As I mentioned with my introduction, the real body of the presentation will be handled by some of the other members. Specifically, we're going to have Joe Hobot and Monica Flores, who are the directors or the co-chairs, excuse me, the Metropolitan Urban Indian Directors Group, which is the organization that we have the memorandum of understanding with. We're also going to be joined by Robert Lilligren, who is the CEO of NACTI, the Native American Community Development Institute, as well as Christine McDonald, who is NCR's American Indian Community Specialist. I also do want to make note, we do have a number of community leaders that are in the audience today that just I wanted to highlight. We have Mary Lagarde, who is the Executive Director of the American Indian Center. We also have Patina Park, who is with the Minnesota Indian Women's Resource Center, as well as Toni Stillay, who is the Red Lake Nation Ambassador that is also located in the city of Minneapolis. So to give you just a quick kind of framework for the American Indian MOU, as Chair Glidden has mentioned, this was enacted in 2003, and is an agreement between the Metropolitan Urban Indian Directors Group and the city of Minneapolis, and really represents a commitment and a sense of sense determination to promote the well-being and mutual interests of the American Indian community. This is a very unique arrangement between government and community, and really serves as a national model about engagement. And I think Robert Lilligren is going to highlight a little bit more about how this stands on a national stage. The American Indian MOU was also the precursor and used as a model for the American Indians' Memorandum of Agreement that is with the Minneapolis Public Schools, which has also seen some very successful outcomes for the American Indian community. So it is a model that has been replicated. After its adoption in 2003, the American Indian MOU was rather robust for a couple of years, and then the work languished for a period of time. And then in 2010 or 2011, when the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department came into fruition, we took on the American Indian MOU, really meeting with community leaders to see if there was interest in taking and reviving this work. And in those conversations that I had with the community, there was a strong belief that the MOU was very much an important document. It was a very important brand within the American Indian community and really represented a very significant body of work. And so we were able to bring that back with the council leadership in 2011 and reestablish the working group. Since that time, the group has really worked on issues around public housing, excuse me, public safety, health, housing, economic development, and family well-being. But now, after six years of work since its revival, we're really looking at trying to revisit and relook at and update the agreement. So looking at updating the structure, the priorities, and the outcomes that we seek from the document. We know the document is dated, again, 2003. The context of which it was written in is significantly different today than it was at that time. Our relationship as a city with the American Indian community is very strong and robust. And there's also a number of changes going on with the Metropolitan Urban Indian Directors Group that really look or provide the opportunity to really refresh this work and reset this agreement for the future. So with that, I am going to stop talking and introduce Robert Lilligren.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rubador, and welcome, Robert Lilligren.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Buju, ndinuwe magana duck. I greet you, Councilmembers, and Ojibue as my relatives. And so, Madam Chair, Councilmembers, I thank you for taking time to consider and to learn about this important piece of policy and this important work that's going on in the city of Minneapolis. And also to reemphasize what Mr. Rubador was saying about the national model this is. And as you know, Minneapolis has a rich history of Native American activism and the founding city of American Indian movement, for example, and also helped establish a number of anchor institutions here in the city that are the envy of the rest of the nation. Nothing like this exists in other cities, and no piece of policy that represents a positive relationship between a local urban Indian community and the local government exists in other parts of the country. So this document is held up in other communities as a model of defining how municipal government and a local urban Indian community relate. And I think most of you are familiar with why we have this robust urban Indian community here, based on relocation of workers during the last century that brought a lot of our ancestors or grandparents, really, or parents to Minneapolis and really incubated the founding of sort of a combined culture of different tribes, languages, and traditions. And then also the movement here that has laid a foundation for embracing Native culture, Native language, Native spirituality here in Minneapolis. And so I congratulate you on being in the vanguard of leaders across the country. The MOU was approved by the City Council in 2003. It was signed by every City Councilmember and then Mayor Archie Ryback in a ceremony at the Minneapolis American Indian Center. And the idea emerged from the local Native community and then leadership of the Metro Urban Indian Directors, or MUD, as we call it. Many of you know Justin Hineman, Tony Lookingout, as co-chairs of MUD at that time. And in my first term as a Minneapolis City Councilmember, MUD co-chair has approached me. And I know that many of you acknowledge that you have consistent constituencies beyond your geographic boundaries of your ward. And being the first tribal member elected to City Council, I became an access point for the local community. And there were some negative things going on at the time, and there had been some high-profile incidents and interactions with police that were generating a lot of unrest within the Native community. And the leadership of MUD and in consultation with the membership, we're looking for a way to have a different kind of relationship with the city government here and hit on this idea of creating a collaboratively-produced memo of understanding. The leadership of MUD produced the first iteration, and then going back and forth over a period of time, we were able to come up with a document that could be unanimously approved by this council and signed by every councilmember, as I said earlier. And the MOU has been an evolving document since its approval here, and the work has been, over time, professionalized, creating more performance measures, creating an infrastructure through MUD that the work to realize the MOU could get done. And in my time and my association with the MOU, it really had a peak within our professionalization of doing the work outlined within the MOU. And a lot of credit goes to the leadership from MUD that you'll be hearing from in just a few minutes. And a lot of credit goes to Christine McDonald, who's the American Indian Community Specialist of Neighborhood Community Relations. And the level of professionalism and the vast and deep network that she has in the community here has really elevated this work and given us some traction. But it is an older document. It's now 12 years old, and it is time to review the document. It's really our responsibility to go back to the community and report on the work that's been done. And I really urge you to see MUD as a strong partner of yours in the community in doing this work and in producing this update of this document. And so there is work to be done. It's really just the start of the update process, the review process, but we hope that we gain your support in this process. And so I am thrilled and honored and humbled then to introduce the Neighborhood Community Relations Native American Community Specialist Christine McDonald to talk about some of the work that's been done to date. And if there are no questions, Madam Chair or Councilmembers? Thank you.
I'm not seeing any immediate questions, so...
Thank you, Christine.
All right. Thank you for giving us that foundation, and welcome, Christine McDonald.
Good morning, Council Vice President Glidden, Glidden, Councilmembers. Buju, mina gejigad, ogadaki, kabuwi, gandishnakas, aja jakundunba. I'm Christine McDonald. I am the city's American Indian Community Specialist. I've been in my role since 2011, October of 2011. So I came in after the revitalization in 2011. I just wanted to cover a couple of statistics around the community. When we talk about our community, we're referring to the residents here, the American Indian residents, the American Indian organizations, and our urban tribal offices. Officially, American Indians make up 2% of the population, which is roughly 7,700 residents in the city. That's officially, but when we count for ourselves, because we're a highly mobile community, we're looking at more like 10,000 American Indians in the metro area. The wards with the highest populations are the Ninth Ward, Landrakano, the Sixth Ward, Councilmember Worsami, and the Twelfth Ward, Councilmember Johnson, respectively. There are 1,200 American Indians that live in the East Phillips neighborhood. Little Earth residents represent more than 30 different tribal nations alone. So there is a significant diversity within the American Indian community itself. The majority of my work is to support the Memorandum of Understanding, promoting the well-being, grow the mutual interests of the American Indian community, which includes working with the subcommittees around public safety, health, housing, employment, economic development, education, and family preservation. I'm also involved in supporting work that has impact across the community, such as previous conversations around opioid abuse, which is leading to the current planning of an upcoming opioid crisis response forum in August. That work has also led to a supporting role for the emerging work of the Natives Against Heroin Group and the Ninde Coalition, which is working to address maternal opioid abuse with the assistance of DULAs. In 2013, there was partnered work with the Native American Development Institute on a grant from the Minneapolis Foundation to do voter engagement work in the American Indian community. There was work with the city's IT department, along with Elise Epphardt, around the digital divide that helped to get computers and Wi-Fi into the homes of American Indians in the East Phillips neighborhood, as well as connecting American Indian OIC with the city's IT department, which led to the Fix-It clinics that the American Indian OIC has been partnering with. There is current work to address commercial sexual exploitation with tremendous support from Councilmember Conno's office. Upcoming work also includes supporting Indigenous language revitalization. And I've also heard a lot from the community lately that they appreciate the increased engagement coming out of the city of Minneapolis and the community around many efforts. NCR's community dialogues have also become a great tool to continue relationship-building with the community by bringing city department and community leadership together for conversation. I'm looking forward to using those dialogues and creating stronger connections so we can reinforce the work of the departments in supporting the MOU and the American Indian community. And then I want to introduce Dr. Joe Hobot, who can speak to the upcoming work around the MOU.
All right. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, members of the committee. Aho, metakio wason. Greetings, my relatives. I greet you in my native language of Lakota. My family are the Unk Papa Band of the Lakota Nation. I currently serve as the President and CEO of American Indian OIC, and I also currently have the distinct honor of serving as the chairperson for the Metropolitan Urban Indian Directors Group alongside several talented, immensely talented colleagues, including Ms. Monica Flores from Bigewin, who also serves as the co-chair of Metropolitan Urban Indian Directors Group. So I just want to provide some current context of the work of MUID, and there's been some changes in the community in the past three years or so. There's been a lot of changeover in leadership in the Indigenous organizations that are here in the city of Minneapolis, myself included. While I've been at the American Indian OIC for 10 years now, I've been in the current position as President and CEO for just over two years. Along with myself, we've seen changeover in leadership in the Minneapolis American Indian Center, Bigewin, as well as the Minnesota Indian Women's Resource Center and other Indigenous organizations. And a lot of us, as we came into these new positions, we realized that we shared a lot of similarities in the work that we do on behalf of our people and on behalf of the community. And quite frankly, we got tired of having to try to compete with one another, either for resources or for the attention of folks that can be brought to the table to help our people and help our mission and help our work. And in the spirit of this new camaraderie, of new leaders arriving at their posts, and in the spirit of looking to work smarter, not harder, we began to really dive deep into the ways in which we could collaborate and partner with each other's organizations, ways in which through our mutual commitment to our work, we could benefit each other and address the totality of needs of our people. The Metropolitan Urban Indian Directors Group is a prime vehicle for having these discussions and coordinating these efforts. Each of our various organizations represent a wide array of services, from healthcare to housing to chemical dependency treatment to my own organization's work in education and workforce development. And by bringing us together into this forum, we found ways in which that we can address these needs in a more comprehensive manner. So within that context, we worked to restructure Metropolitan Urban Indian Directors Group. We focused the subcommittees within the directorship to speak to the work that's being done on the front lines. We have six subcommittees that are currently working under the overall umbrella of the Metropolitan Urban Indian Directors Group. These six committees are then populated not only by the leadership with the various organizations, but most importantly, they're populated by the folks that are working in the direct service provision, the frontline staff that are there engaged with our community members. This is absolutely integral to the work of MUD. Because it is a powerful point of contact with our community, these are our stakeholders that inform our work. Our frontline service providers can carry their voices into the meetings of the subcommittee. The subcommittees then can align their work along with the MOU to make sure that we're forwarding and advancing the interests of our community in a healthy and comprehensive way. In addition to the work of the subcommittees, we also work comprehensively for some of these larger issues. My colleague Christine alluded to the opioid issue, which is currently a crisis situation for our community, as well as the sex trafficking issue, as well as advocating on behalf of our relatives that live outside of the city limits, that MUD can bring voice to their concerns as well. Some folks may not realize that a lot of our population co-locate between the city of Minneapolis and outstate to the sovereign nations. So MUD has become a forum for which these issues can be discussed, advanced, and advocated for on behalf of our people. In addition, beyond that, MUD can also utilize its capabilities, its platform, to convene the community. We've had several large convenings where we brought our community members in to either discuss issues, to celebrate. We've advanced powwows that have occurred locally within the city. We've had community forums to talk about the opioid issues. We had a community forum in May of 2015, working on employment issues and working towards full employment for Indian country, which was convened at the Indian Center. So these are the issues and the work that MUD has done and will continue to do. And there's kind of a new esprit de corps with our colleagues here as we move forward. So what we have proposed within this RCA going forward is a timeline to refresh the MOU document and to incorporate a written work that encapsulates the work of the various subcommittees, as well as provide some oversight for the work that's been accomplished in the previous two years, not only to inform our stakeholders, but to provide a guide for future leadership that will occupy our chairs going forward. With that, Madam Chair, I conclude our presentation and would invite any and all questions on behalf of the committee for myself or my colleagues.
Thank you. And then I just didn't know if Ms. Flores wanted to introduce herself as well, or...
I did. I'm Monica Flores, and I'm the Executive Director of Bigewin, and we do asset building with the community. We do individuals, homeownership, small business, and higher education. We work on their credit counseling, trying to get them packaged ready so that they can enter into traditional lending. And I'm also the co-chair of MUD, and I've been there for about a year. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. And so I will ask if there are questions or comment. Councilmember Conno?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So first of all, you know, I want to thank our community leaders for being here today. The work that you've put into this initiative for years is admirable and much needed from my perspective as a policymaker here. The role of NCR has been quite significant, too. I'm very thankful for that department and for those resources that support people like Christine McDonald, who is out there. And I see Christine almost everywhere, and I'm always wondering, oh man, is she running for office? Because we see each other in every space, and I think that's a really good thing. I really appreciate seeing our staff so involved in our community efforts. I also just want to acknowledge that Leah Shefty is here from 311, who has also been really good about getting the word out about the city's 311 programming and services, as well as Koya Whitehead-Ardachuker, who is now leading the American Indian efforts internally for voter engagement and the elections department. So we have a really good team, and I'm really excited about where things will go. And I just want to acknowledge that as a city, you know, we see and feel the presence of the Indigenous community here every day, whether you've had wild rice for dinner or for food, or whether you see it in the names, Minnehaha, you know, all the different names that we have throughout Minnesota, which was actually something that I learned when I came to this country, when I immigrated here when I was 10. I would see these names, and I would wonder, well, where did they come from? And over time, I learned a lot more about the strong Indigenous roots of this community. So nationally, you know, too, the U.S. government has been shaped positively by the role of Indigenous people. Primarily, I remember the stories that my elders have told me about the role of the Iroquois Confederacy in helping to shape the U.S. Constitution and a lot of the foundational governing documents that this country put together when they came to this land. And the role of women, you know, they really asked, you know, where are your women when you're doing all of these plans? And so looking at that, I believe that there's a lot of contributions that our community is making, that the Indigenous community is making to the work of the city. And I just have a question about sort of the past work that has happened. So in looking at, you know, the year that this was established and sort of the structure, one of the things that I wondered about was, in any point in time of those years that happened, was there a significant nexus between the work of the Minneapolis Urban Indian Directors Group and specific policy that the city was advancing? Because sometimes, one of the most sort of direct ways that we can impact the residents in Minneapolis is through an ordinance change or a policy proposal. There's also sort of funding requests or programmatic-level work. And so I'm just trying to figure out if previously, if there was something that we were working on together in terms of community and policymakers to advance a specific policy request or ask, or if the work has looked differently.
Sure. I'm at a loss to really speak well about what occurred before my time. But I do know that during my tenure at the American Indian OIC, one of the major policy advancements was the work through the Education Subcommittee of MUD, which is referred to as the Phillips Indian Educators Group, or PI. And PI, utilizing the vehicle of MUD, negotiated a memorandum of agreement with Minneapolis Public Schools, which put a heightened focus and awareness on the achievement of American Indian youth within the school system, as well as incorporating a culturally contextualized approach to the educational processes within the district. This was really progressive and, quite honestly, on the vanguard of a new form of educational engagement with a cultural group. So I can speak to that as being something that has not only been picked up by the interchange between the city and the school board and MUD that I've experienced personally. And I'd invite any colleagues that maybe want to speak to any of the historical antecedents.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Conno, Madam Chair, thanks for the question. And there've been a series of actions that the city has taken that have emerged from the conversations with MUD and the work of the MOU. There have been significant pieces of state or federal legislation that the city has added to its legislative agenda and added the weight of the city's support to moving those items forward. There has been, of course, the Indigenous Peoples' Day, establishing Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Minneapolis, which all of our organizations, including NACTI, were part of the conversation, the MUD organizations, and there was one other excellent thing. The Violence Against Women's Act, adding support to the Violence Against Women's Act on the city's agenda. And so having that kind of support that bubbles up from the community through Metro Urban Indian Directors and then gains the support of this council is very, very significant. Thank you.
Councilmember Conno, did you...
Oh, I am sorry. Please come forward. No. I was just seeing if she had more.
Yeah, I just wanted to add one other instance, and that was the 1862 resolution that was passed, December 2012 through December 2013. That was significant to our community. That was significant from council because it included words that governments had never used before, such as genocide, such as forced marches, such as concentration camps, when we refer to Fort Snellane. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Councilmember, and Councilmember Conno, did you add one more?
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Quincy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One thing you might want to add to your list is the One Minneapolis, One Reed connection with Diane Wilson's book. That was another good thing you worked together on. Thank you for being here. I think it's really important work that we do is revive these documents and revisit them, see what's working, see what needs to be improved on, what can be built on. So thank you for that commitment and for sharing that. I, too, like Councilmember Conno mentioned, am very pleased to see the NCR as a really reliable link between city government and our neighborhood's structure and with the community. So thanks for being there. I think that's a really good outgrowth of what NCR's done, which leads me to one of my big questions, is how does this work help feed our individual neighborhood associations that NCR supports as well? Is there a connection there, or is it just the community operating on its own? Or is there a way that we could...
I'll invite Christine up to address that. I think just from my perspective, what we've seen, I mean, we have a unique status as sovereign nations and as first peoples, and that has been recognized by the city council through this work. And I believe and have seen evidence that this is being watched very closely throughout the state of Minnesota nationally. So this is feeding all kinds of various organizations to see how we do this work and conduct it between our community and the city, but directly with the neighborhood organizations. I'd like Christine to maybe comment on that.
Council Vice President and Councilmember Quincy, thank you for the question. A couple of ways that the work has supported neighborhood organizations has been, there was significant work with the American Indian community in getting people, getting representation on the Epic Board, East Phillips Improvement Coalition. American Indian organizations are active in other neighborhood groups as well. I know Ventura Village is partnered with folks along the American Indian Cultural Corridor. Also, there has been board training that was presented from NCR department into the American Indian community. So there have been a few things that have helped support the neighborhood organizations.
That's great to hear. That's another connection that I think we need to always strengthen and revisit. The other one I would like to include is also on the entrepreneurial business side, is the connection with business associations, whether it's Lake Street Council or the corridor or with our own CPED department. That's another opportunity, which leads me to my next question. I'm sure, Doctor, you have a particular insight on this, is workforce development and on our education connection. Councilmember Conno asked the question, and you responded about how the MUD agreement was...
with the district, school district, is unique and very progressive. But how does that help feed workforce development and really serving Minneapolis's needs, not just the native communities?
What a terrific question, Councilmember.
Thanks for providing that question to me.
Chairman Goodman, the American Indian OIC resides at the intersection of education and workforce development. And what has been as plain as the nose on our face for many years, starting to be recognized beyond our campus, which is, you need to have academic achievement and the academic skillsets in order to onboard into the sophisticated marketplace. For multiple generations, the American Indian community has not received a quality education because the educational system was not designed for our people. It was designed to pacify our people. So not only utilizing the insights drawn from the MOA with Minneapolis Public Schools, utilizing culturally contextualized approaches to education, we incorporate at the American Indian OIC and advocate through the platform of MUD culturally contextualized approaches to workforce development. This can be done through not only support groups and cultural practices that support the training efforts and the placement efforts for our American Indian people as they go into the economy and secure these career pathway placements, but it also can be worked with employers to understand what it is to work with the American Indian community, from just providing concrete information about what it means to smudge or some of our other cultural practices, what that entails when you have a large American Indian contingent working for your company, which will be happening across the board. But more importantly, I think like in the old schoolroom, as I put on my old classroom teacher hat, the old overhead projectors, if you take those transparencies and layer one right on top of the other, you can take the academic disparities and layer them right over the top of the economic disparities that are impacting our community. So what we need to have is a more forward-thinking approach, differentiated approach to how we engage our learners and how do we engage our future workforce. Not only does this impact our K-12 students, but it also impacts our adult learners. So adult basic education also becomes a principal vehicle, not only for providing the academic remediation that our people need, but also as a way of onboarding the career training or career contextualization for our adult learners so they can smoothly transition into employment placement. So MUD allows us, the vehicle, to share our achievements, to collectively advocate on behalf of not only American Indian OIC, but our other providers in education and workforce development. We have a subcommittee we call NEED, or the Native American Employment and Economic Development Subcommittee, where our direct service providers can come into contact and share best practices. But beyond that, I think the most important advocacy point is the advocacy point. We can get out there and lobby other power structures to look at the work that we're doing, to provide material support for the work that we're doing, because the needs of the community are not the needs to be met only by the city of Minneapolis. This is a statewide issue. Minneapolis is leading the charge and we're very grateful for that. And again, some of the more progressive work that's being done here is looked to by other communities as the vanguard of something to be emulated. But MUD allows us that platform to vocalize these needs, to pull in these resources, or pull in other technical expertise from the state offices or outstate to meet the needs moving forward. And education and workforce development go hand in hand in terms of providing economic vitality for our people. So hopefully that answers your question.
Does a great job. Thank you very much. I appreciate that response. Thank you again, Council Vice President, for putting this on agenda. This is an important conversation to be having. And I always encourage links between documents and jurisdictions, that they should be interlinked and not just linear and separated. So thank you for that. Look forward to it.
Thank you. And I would just say that on this particular point, this is something where Dr. Hobart and I had worked together before because the cities had advocated for exactly this kind of support from the state for around workforce issues in partnership with American Indian OIC and other providers. So thank you for that work. Councilmember Warszawny has a comment or question? And then I might just give a heads up to my colleagues. We have been requested to just take a brief break to take a photograph with the community to commemorate this moment. So we'll do that and I'm sure we'll move that forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say thank you for coming and it was a great presentation. Gave me a historical perspective of the old memorandum and I'm very supportive of the community efforts, as I'm one of the councilmembers that has the largest population of Native Americans, and also all the institutions on Franklin Avenue. So thank you again for the community and thank you to NCR and all the city staff that's been working on this. Thank you very much.
Well, I'll just say thank you as well. Thank you to the community members and leadership of MUD for being here with us today. I think this was an important presentation, again, to kind of ground this council, which had not yet had a presentation on this memorandum of understanding in what has been the work to date and understanding what's going to be that trajectory and the importance of updating this agreement. So I just want to say thank you for taking your time to make sure we had that grounding and understanding. And welcome back, Council, former Councilmember Robert Liligren, and thank you for your continued leadership in the community. So we're going to receive and file and then we're going to just have a brief break to take a photograph. So with that, I'll move to receive and file. On approval, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. And then Christine, if you want to direct us on what you would like us to do to make that happen. Maybe everybody come up here and then we kind of smoosh together a little bit, ask my colleagues if that would be, and I would invite all the community members to join us up here if you would like to. I think let's, maybe we want to, Barb stand up?
So there's plenty of room on this right side. So we could fit more, two more people on that side and one or two more. Yes. Actually, we all don't mind, in the back, just move to this direction a little bit. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, there you go.
There we go.
Okay, squish in some more.
We were good.
Looking good, Tony.
Okay. If y'all can't see me, that means you can't see the camera. So one, two, three. And then, the gentleman in the back of the structure, you go to, there you go. Okay, one more. One, two, three.
All right, to my colleagues, I think we can go ahead and just finish our meeting. Our last item is to go through our committee reports. And our first report is Community Development and Regulatory Services with that chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We are bringing forward 21 items for approval on Friday. They include a bond issuance in item number one, land sales to kayak property in item number two, land sales in items three and four, and then a series of land sales to Smart Homes, which is the Thor Construction Company's project to build these manufactured elsewhere, brought to the site, homes at a number of sites in North Minneapolis. This is land sales five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13. So it's a huge number of sites. They're very positive about what they can do on these sites. And these are all properties being bought from the city. Item 14 is an expansion of the sidewalk, food cart vendor location ordinance. Item 15 is a rented license dwelling revocation. 16 are the liquor business and gambling license applications. 17 is awarding exclusive development rights for the Commons on Penn Face Two. Item 18 is signing our local unified plan for workforce investment. Item 19 is the workforce council appointments. Item 20 is our HOPWTH funding awards. And 21 is a donation, accepting a donation for Deb Barhulgan to travel to a conference. Now with that, I'm happy to answer questions on one through 21.
Okay, I am not seeing questions. Next, we have the Elections and Rules Committee with that chair, Councilmember Fry.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We have one item on the agenda for this Friday, which is the approval of election judges.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Health, Environment, and Community Engagement with that chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing forward three items. The first is appointing two people to our Public Health Advisory Board. The second is authorizing an agreement with Hennepin County for onsite influenza immunization clinics for city employees. And the third is authorizing an application to Minnesota Department of Health for a three-year public health nurse home visiting grant. Happy to stand for questions.
Thank you. Next, there is actually no report for intergovernmental relations. Next, there's Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management with the vice chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. There's six items that the Public Safety Committee will be bringing forward. The first is a grant acceptance for the US Department of Justice. Second is a contract with the Timberwolves for Bomb Detection and Security Services at Target Center. Third is authorizing a Minnesota Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force Multi-Agency Law Enforcement Joint Powers Agreement. And the fourth item is authorizing a contract with the Minnesota Crisis Intervention Team to train 500 patrol officers in mental health crisis response. The fifth item is accepting a grant from the Minneapolis Foundation for the EMS Pathways Academy. And the last item is authorizing a joint powers agreement with the state of Minnesota to participate in a disparity study for the Civil Rights Department.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next, we have Transportation, Public Works with the committee's vice chair, Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have 13 items to bring before committee on Friday. The first and second are pedestrian and bicycle advisory committee appointments. The third is a large block event for Somali Independence Day. Number four is the dissolution of our affiliation with the downtown TMO, known as Move Minneapolis. Items number, item number five is for this year's alley renovation program. Item number six is competency test for public works to maintain our OSHA standards with Hennepin Technical College. Item number seven is a contract for auction services for the sale and disposal of our city-owned fleet. Item number eight is a contract for water main reconstruction. Item number nine is paid advertising within the municipal parking system. Item number 10 is a cooperative agreement for federal funds that we will coapply for with the city of Columbia Heights. Item number 11 is a tunnel layout design contract. Item number 12 is a bid for stormwater pump station rehab. And item number 13 is a bid for a self-propelled paint striper. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Ways and Means Report with Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are 12 items on Ways and Means for consideration on Friday. The first three are legal settlements. Items four and five are both gift acceptances for travel expenses to two conferences. Item number six is a Target Center renovation project related to that. It's a delegation of a contract change authority and then an appointment of the chief financial officer, Mark Ruff, to the Target Center Arena Design Group. Item number seven is a contract for criminal background investigation services for contractors. Eight is a contract amendment with Sue Plaster Consulting for equal employment opportunity reporting and workforce planning. Nine is a contract with Deloitte Consulting for benefit consulting services. Item number 10 is the authorization issuance of general obligation tax increment and various purpose refunding bonds. What this essentially does is refinance some of our outstanding bonds and various TIF projects. And what we're able to do through this action will be approximately $6 million in interest payments avoided. So that was a significant thing that we had a discussion about in the committee. We also had the construction contracts change management policy approved. And item number 12 is the first action where we're taking as a council to consider the downtown campus and the strategic real estate plan and issuance of RFPs for that project. So there's three actions with that. Both, the two biggest ones, of course, are the Request for Proposals for Project Management Services and Request for Proposals for Program Development Services. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, we have our Zoning and Planning Committee Report with Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll have six items from zoning and planning. Item number one is a Certificate of Appropriateness Appeal for 4401 Lindell Avenue North regarding an HPC Commission decision. Item number two is local historic designation of the lumber historic, the CA Smith Lumber Historic District. Item number three is a rezoning for Riverdale Ventures. Item number four is also a rezoning at 710 West Broadway. That's to allow for a retail store. Item number five is the local historic landmark designation of the Snyder Mansion at 2118 Blaisdell Avenue. And item number six is approving a small area plan in the Como neighborhood. We also had an update about the comprehensive planet zoning and planning this cycle, which was a sort of general project timeline update, as well as a high-level presentation about CPED's approach to community engagement. So later this week, we should have something to circulate to council members that can be shared with stakeholders, which is kind of a preliminary community engagement plan for the comprehensive plan. And I'm happy to follow up with anyone about that as well. And that's all.
Thank you. And I just realized I had a note from our clerk about more of a verbal report I probably should have given, if I'm able to read it, during the IGR report, because we have two petitions for proposed charter changes that are working their way through the city's process. One is a petition relating to a proposal to ensure the police. The original petition was submitted to the Charter Commission at a special meeting on June 13th. At this point, the city clerk has reported to the IGR committee at its meeting on June 23rd that the petition was insufficient because it failed to achieve the minimum number of valid signatures. There is a process where the petitioners have an opportunity to cure those defects and that timeline is in place. They have until July 5th to submit an amended petition and then the city clerk has a certain amount of time after that to then verify those additional submitted signatures. So that is an update on that. The second item the clerk asked me to give an update on is a petition regarding a $15 minimum wage. There is, we anticipate that there will be a petition filed with the city clerk today. If that does happen, there is again a process for this to go to the Charter Commission, which essentially starts the process of then the clerk acting to review and validate submitted signatures. And we would anticipate hearing from the city clerk if the petition is sufficient with enough valid signatures around July 25th. So that is just a timeline update on those items. I believe with that, that we have concluded with our business for today and we are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.